Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to Zion City Hall for the February 2nd Zion City Council meeting. It's good to see everybody again. We've been holding these Zoom meetings in order to protect ourselves and the citizens from the terrible virus that's been had us locked in our homes for the last 10 or 11 months. So it's really nice to see the faces in person instead of on the Zoom calls. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fireson?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremner, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance for a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Item number four, Agenda Changes. Do it. Can our commissioners have any agenda changes? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Before we proceed, Commissioner Mazal, would you lead us in prayers?
Yeah, thank you. Next meeting, I should have a schedule for some of our ministers in town to do this, but I wasn't able to do it this time. I'd like to read this prayer. This is an ancient prayer coming from the Book of Psalms. May God be gracious to us and bless us and make His face shine upon us, that your ways may be known on earth, your salvation among all nations. May the peoples praise you, O God, may all the peoples praise you. May the nations be glad and sing for joy, for you rule the peoples justly and guide the nations of the earth. May the people praise you, O God, may all the peoples praise you. Then the land will yield its harvest, and our God will bless us. God will bless us, and all the ends of the earth will fear him. Amen.
Amen. And as always, I always like to have a moment of silence. I think in looking back to 2020, we lost 400,000 Americans to the pandemic. That saddened itself. Again, being locked in for our homes for the last 10 or 11 months, it's been difficult on all of us. Again, it's good to see everybody, but thankful for our first responders. Again, always pray for them, for their safety, for the people that are in line to get shots. I got mine today. Just want to keep our, not only residents from the city of Zion, but people in our nation in mind as we continue to heal from the election, the coronavirus, and all of the economic challenges that we've all been faced with. So if we have a moment of silence, it'd be much appreciated. Thank you very much. Item number five, Citizens' Comments. Do you see Bremner?
Sir, I didn't even, I didn't realize I was there. It's my fault. The mic isn't worked up, so. You can pull it back if you want. Don't you have to pull it back?
It might have a wobbly leg on it, so.
There's four little ruts in that carpet breaker where it belongs.
And I have to put them on the payroll for moving.
Send us the bill.
Yeah.
I'm ready to deal.
There we go.
Mayor McKinney, honorable service, gentlemen ladies, I slid before you this evening. Yesterday, I received two letters in the mail, supposedly from the Illinois Department of Employment, I D E S, Illinois Department of Employment Security. I believe those letters to be fraudulent. I contacted Commissioner Fisher. He gave me a number, which I will read into the record with your permission. I did call the Illinois Department of Employment Security. The letters were fraudulent. Somebody filed an unemployment claim using my name, I think probably Quincy, Illinois. I bring this to the attention of you and all the residents of Zion. The mayor mentioned the economic problems. There's also identity theft problems. The number for the fraud reporting section of the I D E S, I guess it runs, so I can think. Call this number, the record player will talk to you, enter the information at once, including your phone number on the desk, but they will call you back. They called me back this afternoon, and apparently a claim was filed. They will deny it and go after whoever filed it. I do thank you for your time, your attention to this matter. Of course, permission is granted.
Permission granted. Thank you, Mr. Bremner. Kathy Champagne?
Hi, it's good to see everybody. Two weeks ago, ZBTF posted the death. Looking back on 2020, I zoomed in. It was good. It was very good. It was interesting to learn the challenges each Jackson body faced, how they dealt with them, and their plans going forward. However, when I saw the photos, I was very disappointed to see the usual culprits were without masks. This pandemic has given us 3,000 deaths per day, a projected 500,000 deaths nationwide by the end of the month, lifelong disabilities to some survivors, and it destroyed many small businesses. The Illinois rate of infection recently dropped below 5%. This was not a accident, not the result of a large-scale vaccine program, not the result of herd immunity. It's a result of science, the severe lockdown, social distancing, sanitizing, and mask wearing. New stronger variants of the virus are appearing worldwide and here. Some predict the worst is yet to come. We may be facing another disaster, or we could predate one. Science shows the pandemic can be managed if we all take simple precautions. The school district has spent tens of thousands of dollars on PPE, cleaning supplies, and labor disinfected the school to keep students, teachers, staff, and administrators safe. Anyone refusing to wear a mask has the potential to undo that effort if they are an asymptomatic carrier. This particular violation of safety guidelines was especially egregious. These kids are our future and their teachers. They and their teachers are invaluable. Why should the school continually be endangered by selfishness and arrogance? Anyone refusing to comply with safety guidelines should be escorted out of the building, no exceptions. The irony of this situation doesn't escape me. Once again, the atheist is asking that we care about and for each other, while the religious leaders expose us all to risk. Thank you.
Denise Lear?
Thank you, Mayor McKinney, and I'm sorry for the hat. I have a bad hair day. First, I'd like to thank the Building Department. I don't know if any of you know, I am the young lady who posted on We Love Zion page about garbage. And through the city efforts of the Building Department, thank you very much, Mr. Serrano, Baron, and Juan. We now have cameras up. We don't have that garbage problem anymore. However, we do have a neighbor now that's still in our garbage, so that's our next problem. I'd also like to find out about the landlord/tenants meeting. When are, are we going to go back to that? I'd really like to get involved with that industry. So if anyone could give me any kind of information, I would really appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll speak on it real briefly, and I'll address it in citizen comments, I mean in departmental commentary. We were planning to put those on, but of course, with the pandemic, we couldn't meet. And we've had discussions over the last, since the pandemic, about moving everything to a Zoom site so that we can continue to have those, include the citizens, as well as some citizen roundtables as we were having as well. But we plan to roll that out probably within the next month or two. We've had our hands full with a lot of things.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you for asking. Item number six, Consent Agenda.
A people of minutes of a regular meeting held on January 19th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. An approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on January 19th, 2021, at 7:41 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Bills vouchers 136634 through 136701 drawn on Huntington National Bank total $262,726.90.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number seven, Discussion Authorization Approval. Item 7A, Consider Proposal from Deegan and Associates for Engineering Services for the Closed Zion Landfills, Per Director Roberts.
Thank you, sir. Attention, the proposal for environmental engineering services for the city's closed landfills. Groundwater analysis, inspections, and recording for I U P A is required as part of the city's post-closure permit. Deegan and Associates were successful in fiscal year '21 with the permit modifications resulting in a reduction of monitoring and reporting requirements for landfill one. They are confident that the same monitoring requirements will be reduced fiscal year '22 for landfill two. Staff request and recommend approval of proposal for the environmental services from Deegan and Associates of Libertyville, Illinois, in the amount of $30,000. The proposed contract is for fiscal year '22 and is to be pledged within the waste park.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second. Questions or discussion? Director Roberts, how many, how much longer are we going to have to conduct these, you know, monitoring tests on these closed landfills? Do we have any idea?
I do. This question was coming. I U P A is very vague about it. I would say at least another 15 years.
Okay.
But the thing about it is, is what Deegan and Associates have been doing is reducing our annual cost, what it's taken to, what types of chemicals or analytical gases we're having to monitor.
Monitor for.
So the next step, if, once they get landfill two reduced, the next step we're going to try and do is close to wells.
Okay, because right now, there's gassing, there's nothing, gas wells.
There's gas vents that they have to monitor, and then there's 12 monitoring wells.
Okay.
So the next step, we're wanting to try and reduce the outer ring of those.
Okay, and hopefully, that'll bring our annual cost down for testing.
That would probably take it in half.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
Just a quick clarification to add to that. Probably about six or seven years ago, I want to say we were already at like $50,000 or $60,000. So Deegan has been working to actually even get us to the 30. So we're seeing results from that already, and we'll continue, and they'll continue pushing that as well.
With a lean away.
Yeah.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item 7B, Consider Approval of Motor Fuel Tax Budget for Administrator Nate.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I wanted to get the motor fuel tax fund in front of you as soon as possible. It's a standalone fund. We can only use it for road projects and specific purposes under Illinois statute. But I didn't want to wait until we address general fund and other funds, because the earlier we get this going, the earlier we can start going out for engineering and bid on the projects, which helps get us in the queue sooner, and actually gets us a lot better pricing than waiting until, you know, October, November to get in that process. So what you have before you is fiscal year '22, May 1st, '21 through April 30th, '22 proposed budget. Just a couple highlights on this. Our actual MFT motor fuel tax is down slightly from what we budgeted in prior years. A big part of that was actually due to COVID. A lot of people working from home, less travel, less gas being sold, as well as gas prices. We didn't see spike as much during the summer months, which would be more taxes if it's more dollars being spent on gas. But we're still in the $900,000 range on that. What has helped us is the Rebuild Illinois Bond Fund. We got an allocation from the state of about $536,000 a year for three years. So this is actually the second year of that. We got that last year as well, however, it wasn't budgeted for, because when we passed the budget, we didn't know we were getting that money. So we are able to use last year's allocation for the street project that we did this fiscal year, have some carryover, and use some of that again going forward. So our patching program, we're holding consistent $200,000, which is about 33% higher than we've done in the past. We did $150,000 in prior years. Last year, I think, was the first year we did 200. Was it 240? Okay. But we want to, we want to keep that patching program up there. We're seeing good results from that. But we're also planning on doing, what we have budgeted here is a million-dollar road project. Half of that spent with the Rebuild Illinois Bond Fund, and the other with motor fuel tax, regular motor fuel tax allocations. So you see that under the road program and engineering, we have the 2021 road program, which will be done in '21, '22, $463,696. That's the $536,000 that we have on further line for the Rebuild Illinois, less, out of the million, out of the million on the road project, the remainder is the $463. We also have the $120,000 that we expect would be the engineering and the observation for that project. And then we've also put in there $75,000 as an estimate for a salt barn. It's, our salt barn is in real bad shape. Years of salt are not good for wood, and we need to get that replaced. We were going to do the roof last year, but we figured the price is close enough that we're actually going to look at just replacing the whole thing using motor fuel tax funds. So with that, we still have about a $300,000 cushion there as a potential for whatever bids come back at, if they come in a little higher, or we're able to get some additional alley projects that pop up, or just carry that forward as a balance for next year, when we'll have that third allocation going. But this is what I would propose as, or recommend for approval for fiscal year '22 for the motor fuel tax fund.
I'll move to approve. I am the second. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number 7C, Consider Appointments to the Fire Pension Board at E911JETS for Mayor McKinney. Now that we have a new fire chief, Justin Stre, great to see you. Congratulations. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your continued service to our city. The appointment will be to Chief Lewis was on these boards that we're talking about, the fire pension board and the E911 Jet Speed Board. So is there a motion to appoint new fire chief, Justin Stre? So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number eight, Departmental Commentary. Director Ianson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Our budget line requires a hot reply for building permits here in COVID-19. Couple ways that could be done is you call the city website, click on applications and permits. All the forms are on the website along with registration form. We also have a table up front in the entryway where permit applications can be picked up. They can be emailed to the staff, they can be dropped off in person in the drop box, or mailed in. Once we receive everything, we contact the person and make arrangements for payment. They can either drop off a check, mail in a check, or pay online, and once that is done, we have a permit to go back. We can still issue permits to a COVID-19, just wondering if everybody's up to it.
All right. Thank you. Director Ianson? Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. Of course, everybody has noticed that winter has actually came upon us. My comments are just kind of geared to a lot of phone calls that we received in these last few storms. The first storm we had on Monday, Tuesday, it was almost five inches. If you listen to the radio, we had a lizard under five inches. And then the road lizard came. So over Sunday, we had 13 inches here in Zion. That was over a 18, 19-hour period. So some of the questions, comments from citizens we were receiving was, why does the plow driver ever keep plowing in my driveway? Unfortunately, that is a byproduct of plowing. We put crews out, our crews were out for 17 and a half hours plowing. They plowed every street at least four times, every alley four times. So we started at 2:00 in the morning, and it usually takes about five hours to get through a section of the town. By the time they come back around, there was more snow out there. And of course, people did their driveways, and here comes the bad old plow driver again. We tilt the blades towards, to always to the right, and that's more for safety aspect of not letting a wind roll down the center of the road or excess of snow down there. Because our main objective is to clear the road for vehicle traffic. I feel for people, I'm sorry, but we don't have the time to go back and clean out or get driveway for everybody. If the driver picked his blade up or tilted the blade every time, we're either pushing it onto your neighbor, which you probably have here, but your neighbor's not having that. So this is one of the reasons why we go that route. I know I feel there were a lot of phone calls from people that said we never came down their street, never plowed an alley. I'm here to tell you, they went down every alley, every, every street, in the minimum of four times. I was out there watching, going through the city with them. But at times, the snow was so heavy that they went through, and then, like I said, four or five hours later, when they come back through, it did look like they didn't have gone through. But if they hadn't gone through, you would have had 13 or more inches of snow in that alley. The other part of this snowstorm that kind of slowed us up was it was a wet, heavy snow. Plowing alleys is hard enough, but when you have a wet, heavy snow, you can only straight blade in there. And that pushes it off or brings it up to where we have to constantly back up and push, back up and push. The downtown areas, we were receiving phone calls on the parking there. Parking is the last we touched. We did get it cleaned. I think by the next morning, there was people to park within downtown. I know there's excess snow down there now. We were planning to come in early, probably next week. The only way to clean that up is to remove it. However, we have more snow coming in. There's a prediction of about five inches hitting us Friday, Thursday, Friday. So we're going to wait till after that, before we start trying to clean up and open some of the spots up.
Well, thank you, Director Roberts. I think your, your crew has done a remarkable job. When I got up on the first snowstorm and saw that the alleys had been plowed, I understood that your guys had been out very early to get that done. So thank you. I know we all hear a lot of criticisms at this time of the year, but you know that I call you each time after a snowstorm and just thank your crew for what they do. And people don't understand, sometimes there's seven people on that crew working 17 hours. And one of the things that you mentioned to me that's crucial is, if you ride in a snowplow for any amount of time, it's hard on your body. So thank you and your crew for what you're doing, getting ready for this next round of Director Roberts, can you talk about plowing the sidewalks downtown? You and I have an exchange on that.
Yes, sir.
Can you address that locally?
The sidewalks downtown are ultimately the business owner's responsibility. We just do not have a crew big enough. In the past years, we have utilized the public service, people who are coming up to volunteer and do ours. Due to COVID, those numbers have been way down. The two or three that do show up are not happy when we put shovel in their hand right now, and they look at the big snow mound. But the supervisor are also above that program. We have a machine, a trackless machine, and a snow blower on it. We utilize that when we have to. But it does, right now, it's taking a lot longer.
Thank you. Any other comments? Administrator Nate?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. Both are probably not going to be met with the utmost joy, but I want to remind everyone that current city vehicle stickers expire April 30th of this year, so those will be going on sale shortly. What we're actually planning on doing this year is putting a form in everyone's water bills, so that they can get that. It'll also be available on the website, so you can download it, fill out the information, get it back to us. If we continue, if you don't get it mailed into us, or if you don't get it to us in person, based on, we're still looking at schedules for possibly opening up partial times, but we can get the information and mail you your city sticker as well, based on comfort level of the individuals. But we're working out the logistics of that, but we will be putting it out in everyone's water bills, so they will get a form for all the vehicles in their, in their household, if it applies to them. So keep an eye out for that. The second item is water shut offs. We have put a suspension on that for almost a year now. We're coming up on a year. Part of that is due to just understanding everyone's situation, dealing with the pandemic, but also with the stay that's been put on evictions for tenants. We have not done shut offs because you can't occupy, well, first of all, we don't, we want people to have water, to be able to wash, sanitize, clean. But secondly, you can't stay in a property for, I think, 72 hours without water. So if you shut off your water, it would essentially be an eviction, and there's a stay on evictions right now. That is still in place, so we're looking at the timelines to see whether that gets extended or not. But we have a plan in place right now for May 1st to potentially start shut offs, depending on whether that gets extended or not. But what we're going to do is, in people's water bills, that if they are shut off eligible, you will get a shut off notice with a letter that says we are not doing it right now, but your account is eligible for that. We will also be providing that list to the township, so they, they can do some proactive outreach to individuals on that list. So if they need assistance, bring in their, their account current. Everyone will have basically a three-month lead time. So even though we're starting May 1st potentially with shut offs, it will not be, it will only be for one section of the city. We have three billing cycles. So the bills that, the shut off notices that would normally go out in February, those will be the first people that will be eligible in March. Another round will go in March. Those will be eligible in June, and then Aprils will be eligible in July. So we'll phase those in and make sure everyone has three months lead time, if they're eligible for shut offs, to try and get outreach for assistance and bring that, bring their accounts as current as possible to get them off of that list. So I understand everyone's in different financial situations, but unfortunately, if bills have not been paid quarterly over the past year, you may have four months, or four entire years' worth of utility billing that you're behind on. It's, it's going to be coming due here soon. We've, like I said, we put the stay on the shut offs, we put stay on penalties as well, late fees, but we're going to be doing that soon and trying to phase that in and try and give people as much assistance and lead time as possible, so it's not a surprise to anyone. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Administrator Nate. Chief Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Not so much a department commentary, but a little personal commentary. This is going to be my last city council meeting. I'm retiring effective February 12th, after 29, 29 years of service. The pension system in Illinois is really set up for police and fire to work between 20 and 30 years. And I'm older, but not old enough that I don't need another job with insurance until I get to be Medicare-eligible. And so I had a 15-month window that I was going to be looking for that second career, and that opportunity came available a lot earlier than I expected. I know it was a shock to the mayor and the commissioner. I know it was a shock to the mayor and the commissioner. I do just want to stress to everybody here, this was simply, that was the reason for my decision. My decision was not based on anything that happened in Minneapolis, Waukegan, Kenosha, or the online crime reform bill. I've been, I was on an hour and a half Zoom meeting with some state senators and state reps today, as they were breaking that down. And what I've seen about that, there's nothing to be afraid of. They talk about taking organizations from good to great. Good organizations don't need fear of reform. Reform is not a four-letter word, and we are well situated for that. Most of what's in that, we're already doing. So I've stressed that to our people, and I want to just stress that to the general public, that it's not any kind of reaction to that. And then just on a personal note, I've just been so extremely grateful for this job. I, I began my adult career working as an underwriter in an insurance company, a job that was going to make me old, will before my time. And this job has been a passion and a blessing and just something that I felt very fulfilled doing. Kind of a personal mission statement I've had for that comes from chapter thirteen of Romans, which some of you are going to be familiar with some of this, but picking up in verse three, it says, "For rulers hold no terror for those who do right, but for those who do wrong. Do you want to be free from the one, from fear of the one in authority? Then do what is right, and you'll be commended. For the one in authority is God's servant for your good. But if you do wrong, be afraid; for rulers do not bear the sword for no reason. They are God's servants, agents of wrath, to bring punishment on the wrongdoer." And most people are probably familiar with that last one. That gets bantered about a lot. But I was just very thankful that God reflected on me that, to me, that my first responsibility was to commend those who do what's right and to be a good, a servant for their good. And I've had the privilege of doing that for twenty-nine years. And yes, I've had to do some of the back end of that, those verses. But by God's grace, I've always been able to do that with respect for their humanity and recognizing that most of the people I encountered did not have the benefit of a stable, two-parent home that I had, the economic and educational opportunities that I had. And they will say that this job will change you, and it has, but overwhelmingly for the better. I've become a better person as a result of this job. I thank the city for giving me that opportunity, all those who mentored me, those who came before me, Mayor, for your trust in me, giving me this appointment, and for Commissioner Fryerson. Nobody could have anticipated what 2020, what it's going to bring to us in terms of law enforcement. He knows this, the mayor knows this. He's the right man at the right place at the right time for that job. He's asked tough questions, but with an open mind, and it's been good for our department, for our city. So just thank you for the privilege of being able to serve the city for twenty-nine years.
Thank you, Chief. We've had our talks in private, and we all wish you nothing but the best. You and your family, the best of health and spirits as you move forward with your, with your new career. Of course, we're going to miss you, but you know where to find us, and of course, we know where to find you too.
The number's not changing, same, same number.
Fire Chief Street, that's a tough act to follow, but...
You're not retiring, I know. I wish I would have been able to go first. But first of all, congratulations to Chief Henderson, as well as recently retired Chief Lewis, on successful careers serving the city as I am, so thank you very much. The only thing I have is a reminder to the citizens that we still have a handful of carbon monoxide detectors available due to a grant we received from North Shore Gas. All we ask for is your name and address, and stop by Zion Station, Fire Station One, and we'll be happy to give you one.
All right, thank you, Chief Street. Any of our commissioners have any departmental commentary?
I'd just echo Mayor, what you said about the Public Works crew out there plowing. And I think not only the street, the road crew was out, but I think you also had the water crew out, plowing with our, our water trucks, and a job well done, so thank you for all that.
I just want to say congratulations to the chief, and again, we will miss you. It has been an exciting last year and a half working with you and learning from you and the department. And I'm thankful that, you know, you guys had an open mind to allow me in and ask those tough questions and, you know, just brought me right into the fold of yapping meetings and with the tenants. And you made a real intentional, conscious effort to make sure that I was welcome into the department. So I do appreciate that, and again, best of luck on your next endeavors. And then congratulations again to Chief Street for stepping into the position. I think we made the announcement, you know, previously, but now that we're all back here in person, just wanted to officially say, you know, again, congratulations and glad you hit the ground running and looking forward to, to work with you.
Thank you very much.
I would just, I'll second all these comments on both Chief Henderson and welcome Chief Street. Just in general, and I'm sure the mayor's going to cover a lot of this in, maybe in this meeting and maybe in future meetings. We are still continuing to push economic development for the city. We are still pushing for nuclear waste compensation for the city. We have some other initiatives in the fire. So even with the pandemic, even with the financial challenges that we have, we are still moving forward, trying to do the best for the city. And I think we're all working very hard to do that, so. Support your local businesses, go out and eat in a restaurant, be sure to wear a mask, so. That's all I got.
I just want to say, Chief Henderson, I have, because of my limited time on the board, have not had exposure to what you have done and your, and your, and your staff. But I want to say, it, it's important for, for me and the city of Zion to have the confidence in the, not only the police, but, you know, all the, all the people that are under your control. And I, I thank you and I wish you all the best in your future endeavor. And for the new chief, Fire Chief, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on some comments that were made earlier, and I try not to be long, but there's a couple of things I do want to cover. Again, thanks to Public Works. And this is a time right now, and I've stressed this since I've probably been the mayor, how important it is that we come together as a community as we deal with the challenges that face us. And the snow over the weekend was a challenge. And my family has lived in the thirty-first block of Gilead since nineteen sixty-two. And this weekend, I was moved by the actions of the neighbors surrounding me as the plowing was great, the alleyway, once the street, the snow plows came through and blocked the alleyways again. And not being, not being critical, it's just, it's a part of the function. But what I saw was five neighbors get out, including myself, and not only remove snow near the fire hydrant, which we understand how critical that is if there's a fire in the neighborhood, that that's not blocked, and it gives our first responders an opportunity to get there and get their work and possibly save your house and your lives. But I saw the neighbors coming out and helping each other, unclog the artery of the alleyway, help each other shovel their driveways and sidewalks. Five to six neighbors, all in the same. And so it was, for, for me, it filled my heart with such joy to see how the neighbors there were coming together. And we have to do this all over the city, not only with snow removal, but everything else. I've talked about the importance of, now that we are still locked in, how we have to do welfare checks on our neighbors. Call people that you know, see how they're doing, because this is a tough time emotionally, mentally, and physically for everyone. So I, I would just like, like to applaud my neighbors for what they did and being a part of that was the spirit of Zion that we always talk about. Denise, you've been here as long as I have, the people that have lived here, you understand that spirit. And some of these people that have moved into my neighborhood, they're new to Zion, but they've picked up the spirit. And so let's continue to do that throughout the pandemic with the snow, be understanding of our Public Works crew, how hard they are working to be able to get the streets clear so that we can get where we need to go and how we want to go. Pitch in and help a little bit, and things will go smoothly. Ms. Leary, you talked about the landlord meetings. And we've been talking about that for several months, of organizing that so that we can continue to have this dialogue. As Chief Henderson said, who could have predicted what 2020 would bring us? And a lot of plans that we have made as the city and continue to make and continue to work hard behind the scenes, we're continuing to put those in place. So within the next couple of months, definitely, we want to continue to have those landlord meetings with the tenants, as well as the roundtables we have with citizens about what we can do to continue to improve our city. We've been having meetings at restaurants. Of course, the restaurants have been closed until this week. So we'll continue to do those with Zoom meetings, and it's so essential that, as I said this at the last council meeting on Zoom call, that we have to have more than the same ten people show up. Because we always, those people are invested, there are more people that are invested that we read the comments on social media sometimes, and we respond in our own way. But people also need to know that while they're being critical, there are things being done behind the scene, discussions that have taken place for months and years in the city, that we're continuing to make sure that our residents have the services that they need and that we're trying to create a safe environment here. I've had some of those conversations with citizens that have called about snow removal, gunshots, bad neighbors. And I welcome those calls because it's an opportunity for each and every one of us, as we get those calls, to let them know what we are doing behind the scenes to try to make our city better and that we need their help to do that. Mr. Bremner, you, you brought up something that's so crucial, the false unemployment claims, the mortgage fraud statements that seniors are being subjected to during this time. And there are so many people that want to take advantage of people during their most vulnerable moments. And last week, we had a woman come into our city hall, had contacted me about a letter she received about her house being foreclosed upon. And it sickened me to see that someone is trying to take advantage of a woman that her house has been paid for. So we, as a staff, City Clerk Spooner and the Township Office, did what we could do to point her in the right direction. And we are here as servants of the city to try to point our citizens in the right directions when there are challenges. And I know each and every one of us are committed to doing it. And sometimes it's just as simple as, hey, here's the number for the building department or for our finance department. It's putting people in the right places and directing them to the right resources that can help them. And that's what we're trying to do here, and we need everybody's help. When you get a call like that, this woman was terrified, she didn't know who to turn to, but thank goodness, we were able to point her in the direct, right direction and get some help. So all of our, our seniors, our citizens that are out there, be wary of these online schemes. They're, they're seeming to increase, and you just have to be, if you're skeptical, you don't have to respond, find the right person that can help you. Don't be embarrassed to ask for help. The last item that I, I want to talk about is the acknowledgement and the start of Black History Month. I put something together that, if you will bear with me, I would like to read and hope that my Evelyn Wood speed reading course helped me in college, for those that can remember Evelyn Wood. Marcus Garvey said, "A people without knowledge of their past, history, origin, and culture is like a tree without roots," quote, unquote. Since nineteen seventy-six, every U.S. president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. This is a time dedicated to reflecting and publicly thanking those African Americans who have gone before us, showing strength and perseverance for what is right. We are eternally grateful for our ancestors' optimistic attitudes, which were difficult to maintain during extremely challenging times in our history. Optimism and believing that things were going to be better have enabled us to move forward toward positive change. Our ability to believe in ourselves, to overcome adversity, has been a strength and testament of our will. Black History Month is not just about learning about the challenges, challenges we as people have been through, it is about our ability to have integrity, leadership, and determination in the face of our struggles. Crisis does not necessarily make character, but it certainly helps to reveal it. Adversity creates strength in character, character and determination, a lesson to learn and celebrate as we chart our continued progress. Black History Month provides us with a moment to celebrate and rejoice in the tremendous changes we have experienced. At the same time, it is imperative that we recommit and learn from our past as to what has worked successfully, so we can clearly identify what we still need to do. We want to take our rich history and reach beyond to inspire the next generations to continue to create and sustain positive change. As the mayor of a diverse city, I am wholeheartedly determined to affect positive change. It is imperative that we demand equity for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, different abilities, sexual orientation, or family composition. As Americans, we all have the same inalienable rights, and by working together, we can continue to achieve momentous success. We at the city of Zion have been taking the opportunity to continue to dialogue about diversity and inclusion with our staff members. As African Americans, we have come together to improve our communities and cities. There's still so much work to do. In our uncertain world, I take the challenge personally and professionally to accelerate change through respect and collaboration. I trust and believe that success can be achieved with consensus leadership, through partnership, associations, collaborations, and teamwork. We increase our value together to unify and succeed. Black History, about, Black History Month still matters. Celebrating and study, studying black history as part of American history, it is critical to understand our progress as a nation by recommitting ourselves to the principles those in the past have fought so hard for, to make the world a better place. It's time to realize that the recognition of our history shouldn't be limited to one month, but celebrate it year-round. In reading that, it brings thought to one of the most influential women of my generation that lived, her name was Sadie Watts. She lived on the block of Twenty-Eighth and Elizabeth. She moved here in nineteen fifty-two from Alabama. She had the first food pantry in Lake County and shared with all. Prior to the civil rights movement, during the civil rights movement, she fed everyone that she could feed, regardless of race, creed, color, nationality. She died at a hundred and one years old this past year. She was the founder, one of the founders of Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church. She was a leader in our community, and people within our community of all races looked up to her because of her commitment to make Zion a place, a better place. So on Black History Month, starting yesterday, for me to talk about her is significant because of what she's, what she's contributed to the culture of our loving, giving community. And while she's not here, after a hundred and one years, I know that her spirit lives within us all as we continue to make this place a great place to live. So thank you for listening to me about Black History Month and Sadie Watts. May she continue to rest in heaven, and may we continue to carry her legacy forward. Item number eight, announcements. February sixteenth, at six P.M., there's a Zion Township meeting, and at seven P.M., Zion City Council meeting. March second, at seven P.M., there's a Zion City Council meeting. At this time, pursuant to I, five, ILCS one twenty dash two open meetings for the discussion of filed pending and or probable or imminent litigation personnel collective bargaining. The city council is going to go into a closed session. If you want... If you want to remain here until we come back out of closed session, feel free to do so. If not, have a safe drive home. Great to see you, and we'll see you on February sixteen. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, if, we have one item after closed session relating to closed session. If you'd like to stay for it, I am going to ask that individuals go out into the lobby so we can remain distant and here during closed session, and then we'll invite you back in afterwards. Thank you.